Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, September 11th. So today, just with the events that happened, obviously eighteen years ago today, before, as we stand for the pledge, I'd like everyone to just take a moment of silence to remember everything that happened. There was many years ago, and just thoughts and prayers are with the people that lost their lives that day.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will begin with board reports. Thank you.
Okay, so I've been getting back into the routine of school, so getting used to waking up at six thirty in the morning every day. And then I've also been working a little with SMASK to prepare for their general assembly meeting on October twenty-fourth that will be held at Leonardtown High School. Along with that, I've been also working with Dr. Smith and Dr. Marr for the SLAC committee for this year.
Busy, busy.
Well, as you know, school's opened, so I had the opportunity to let Dr. Walker drive me around, driving Miss Daisy. And we had a great time. It was wonderful. This is our fifth year doing it together. I really appreciate the time that he takes to drive us to each school. We started out at Spring Ridge, which, you know, when we walked in, there were quite a few parents in there with their students registering for school. So it was a crowded office when we walked in there, and kudos to the staff who got them registered and got them a schedule and in-class so that they could be there for the first day. Then we went up to Ridge Elementary School. Ms. Bataoka had, you know, she was just starting to go around to the classrooms to visit each of the teachers. I was very impressed that, really, she had moved each of the teachers to a new classroom or to a different position in there, and they were all very excited. There were two students from St. Mary's College that were going through their master's program that were in there. They were, you know, in there welcoming the kids right off the bat. Then we went to Park Hall. They, I will say, whoever the people were that did those old trailers, that, I guess there were four old trailers, that were put together and fixed up so that the school, they're doing renovations on the roof and the AC system, or the HVAC system. So they're moving, like, let's say the first grade classroom is out in these trailers. It was impressive. Let me tell you, whoever did that work, there was like a little, I guess like an area, not a porch, I don't want to say a porch, but an area coming off of there, going, you know, steps going down, there were bathrooms in there so that the kids didn't have to go back into the school itself. And then we went to the Charter School, even though they had been in session previously, we went there. And Ms. Funya, the principal there, took us around just to, you know, kind of see what was going on, went off to Fairlead, one of my favorite schools. Went in there, they were very busy. And then we went off to Piney Point to end there. But I will tell you that, except for the Charter School and Fairlead, all the other schools had parents in there registering their child for the first day. So I know it was very busy for the staff, the secretaries in there trying to get children registered. I did make it a point to go see each of the nurses at the schools that we went to. There was one of the nurses at Spring Ridge was having a very busy morning since all these students were being registered, Les, and I forget his last name, really nice guy.
Dr. Bennix.
What is it?
Bennix.
Okay.
B-I-N-X, Bennix.
So, really nice guy, but he was swamped, but I did make a point to go see each of the nurses. And also, we went around, we tried to get as many of the new teachers that were there as possible. It wasn't really possible at Spring Ridge since there were, like I said, the staff was pretty well swamped with registering students, so, but we did try to catch as many of the new teachers to welcome them as we could, and thank you again to Dr. Walker for carting me around, so.
Well, I had a very similar experience. I joined Mrs. McCourt and Dr. Farrell, and our first visit was Duke Elementary, and then left Duke Elementary, went to Evergreen. As you know, those two schools are, two are more modern schools, and they're very, they're very similar in their footprint and their design, so it was kind of like deja vu for me. Then we went over to Leonardtown Elementary, and as Mrs. Weaver mentioned, the thing I thought that was really interesting is watching the regimentation, the choreograph of children coming in on the buses, and then they would be, they would come into the school, and the teachers would meet them, and I asked somebody, do you ever lose any kids? Because, you know, I was just worried, because it was stunning, with military precision, I was very impressed with that. Also, I attended the Retirement Teachers Association launch the other day.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. Dr. Smith and I, we were, if you read the newspaper, you saw where we were, we were in the northern end of the county. So Margaret Brent, Chopticon, and then the elementary schools up there, Oakville, Mechanicsville, Letty Dent, White Marsh, and Dinerd. So we tracked down the new teachers-
Mm-hmm.
-interrupted some of their classrooms-
Yes, we did.
-took some of them by surprise, so, but overall, got stuck at Margaret Brent directing students on the compass as to which way to go for a little bit during the change of classes. My son avoided me, like the plague. So, but other than that, I think I have heard nothing from any parents or complaints, so congratulations to everyone on a hats off to the first day of school. So I think it, from our perspective in the community, it went very smoothly. I'm sure there's some behind-the-scenes glitches that happened that were very well taken care of.
It's a duck, and the duck serenely moves across the pond, and you just don't see it's little-
That's right, we don't see a paddle.
That's us, we're this, we're this part, yeah.
So, your term is Washington.
Good morning. It's gonna be a wonderful school year, and we're gonna do everything in our power to make it such. Dr. Montgomery and I visited Great Mills, Green Holly, Greenview Nodes, Town Creek, and Esperanza Middle School. We divide the schools up, so all schools will be covered on the first day. The students were happy, the students were learning, teachers were teaching, the buildings were sparkling, meals were served, the buses had safely delivered students to school, and systems were working in the school. I want to thank everyone who made our school opening a huge success, human resources for hiring the best teachers, supporting services, food services, fiscal services, did I say student services? Transportation, can't have schools without the students being there. Maintenance, everything was working. Operations, everything was clean, safety and security, everybody was on duty in the hallways and at the security festivals. Curriculum and instruction for making sure that the students and teachers would be on task with what they need to learn. I want to thank the deputy superintendent, assistant superintendents, our Board of Education members, and our superintendent of schools for working so diligently to make it a wonderful opening. Dr. Montgomery and I also welcomed the new teachers to the school system, and that was a great pleasure. So it takes a lot of work to get this done, a lot of it is done over the summer, and a lot of it is done, it takes a year to get it done, for everything to run smoothly. So thanks to everyone, it was a wonderful day.
Dr. Marr and I toured nine different sites. We started at the Leonardtown campus, at Leonardtown Middle School, and moved on to Leonardtown High School, Fairlead, and the Tech Center. We added the Tech Center, in years past, we have not been going there because there hadn't been students there, but now that students are there on the first day-
Very first day.
-we popped in, the students were all leaving as we were going in, but we did have a chance to talk with a number of the instructors who were there, surprised them, I think, very much, and had a great time. Then we went on down to Carver, on to Lexington Park, up to Hollywood, where Dr. Marr and I were both honored to receive their construction helmets because-
Not an official construction helmet.
No, 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 I told them that they'd let me know, I could have brought my dad's. But they did, they are also undergoing renovations as they are at Park Hall, and so they decided to make this a part of their theme for the year, which is why all of the teachers were, you know, had their construction helmets. So that was great fun. And I will say that there also, there were some additional relocatables on-site to deal with the flux of having to move throughout the building since the construction there is going on during the school year. And I heard over and over again from Dr. Gilman, just absolute praise for Ms. Leyna, who is the head of design and construction, and who was ultimately overseeing all of the relocatables, the movements of those relocatables, and ensuring that they were ready. And her attention to detail was really a big part of the praise that Dr. Gilman shared with Dr. Marr and I. So, Dr. Walker, please, please share that with her, because they were, the staff there were incredibly impressed by the work that had been done, or seen by her, but by all the staff who made sure that those relocatables were really nice places to be in, I mean, they were striking. So, and then we ended our tour at Benjamin Baneker, and then down to the Early Childhood Center, so that we made sure that we made stops at all the buildings.
Yeah, stop a little bit, right.
Right, so no one felt left out. But to Mrs. Washington's point, the, walking into classrooms and seeing students going through their expectations for the year and doing so in the framework of whatever the particular class was, was really impressive. And it speaks to the professionalism of the staff that we have. And, and other than the middle school students, more of the high school students looking like they were just not yet awake, the, everybody was looking good for their first day, so. And no tears, no parent tears, no kid tears.
I was impressed.
We came across a couple of tears.
Well, yeah.
Little ones, little ones, not the older. So, other systems don't do this, this is something we've been doing for well over a decade. I mean, it really kind of defines who we are as a school system, that, you know, the first day out, all eyes on, everybody engaged, get a feel for your system. I truly appreciate the comments that you make regarding our facilities in particular and the incredible amount of work that goes on, through capital planning, through maintenance, through operations, through food service, through, it really is, it's amazing, where you see other systems, they're scrambling, and they don't have this, and they don't have this, and they're, you rarely hear that. Mr. Witten's gonna be coming up, and he's gonna be talking about the comprehensive master plan and facilities, and he'll be talking about all of that. But the fact that we're able to start from scratch, eighteen thousand kids roll in, twenty-four hundred employees, and you're right there to see it, so, you know, you see what you see what you see. I think that's, I think that's really something that defines us as a, as a school system. We're busy on the first day. I had made a pledge to the new teachers, all the teachers who were new to our system, many are not new teachers, but they're new to our system, I said I would come and visit them in their classroom in the first week of school. I don't know that I'll ever say that again.
[laughing]
And certainly never, you know, when we have over a hundred and twenty new teachers, it has been, I've been busily bouncing about through, I have visited every single school except, it's easy to do that, except, I have not been out to Piney Point. I will visit Piney Point before the end of this week, they didn't have any new teachers. So fantastic, stable staff, that's really wonderful, and I did not visit Fairlead yet, but I have seen Mr. Dothard several times, but I will go to Fairlead, they don't have any new teachers. So that really says something to the stability of both of those staffs. The hiring that we've done this year, the market becomes more and more challenging as education kind of falls behind other professions when the, when the economy's going gangbusters. When the economy slows down, then suddenly everybody looks to education for its stability, for its fantastic benefits, for the incredible working and professional environment that it affords. When the, when the economy takes off, people start looking at maybe, well, I'll make more money doing that, so maybe that's what I want to do, and it's never a good decision. You should love what you work, and that's what you should do. That being said, in a tight market, we have hired some of the most incredible staff I have ever seen, brand-new teachers who are falling to work like they've been doing it for ten years, teachers who have fifteen years of service, who are as enthusiastic as if it is their very first day. I've been coerced to dance in classrooms, to participate in memory games, showing my feeble-minded fifty-three-year-old brain kind of struggling to be like, you know, Tommy Tarantula, and you're, you know, very good stuff. You have a great school system. Kudos to HR for recruiting and bringing down, it's our job, it's my job this year to make sure that every single one of those teachers knows that, that we are absolutely committed to them, we are invested in their professional future in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and we are their professional pathway to the end of their career, may they stay at least fourteen years, because that's our average, fourteen years, you have to stay at least fourteen years. And it's not just educators, it's all of the professional staff and all of the support staff that we hire, because the one thing that I've seen this year is three different teachers who have entered the system through different ways, and then been supported by their professional colleagues and encouraged to consider education, gone back through tuition reimbursement and through the comprehensive programs with the Southern Maryland Higher Ed Center, that's now the University of Maryland, Southern, I don't know what it's called, and got their teaching certification and are now in our schools, two of them specifically at Park Hall that I visited yesterday, incredible. So if we can't, if this, if the, if they're not finding their way through universities on their own, we're gonna figure out a way to draw them from our community, make them love our school system, invest in them personally and professionally, and have them become the next generation of teachers in St. Mary's County Public Schools. It's incredible. Before we all started that, I went to Friday Night in the Park, Mr. Hall, the president of the NAACP invited me, what a great, what a great opportunity for all people in the community to come together, right before school started, it was a gorgeous night, it was really a lot of fun. New Teacher Seminar, that was on the second day, so I got to see all the new teachers at the end of their second day. They were a little bit bedraggled, but full of great stories, what we're doing with them this year, and we've done New Teacher Seminar for a very, very long time. Dr. Montgomery and myself, we've made a commitment that we're gonna, we're gonna come to the beginning of each one of the New Teacher Seminars that are held the first Wednesday of every single month, and we're gonna spend about ten or fifteen minutes just to, just to interact with them, to give them some food, tacos on October, we gotta figure out how we're gonna do that, because they said they wanted tacos.
Taco Tuesday.
Taco Tuesday, but it's actually Wednesday. But we've given each one of them a journal, and their homework from us is that at the end of every single day, write down a little something about your first day, your day, write down a little something about what happened. They're really, they're really quite precious, and we have to compel ourselves sometimes to do that, because we might remember and stick in our head some of the more challenging things that happen, but every single day, moments of wonder happen with our kids in our classrooms, and capture it and look back at it, and we were inspired to do this, I was inspired to do this, we were inspired to do this, because that's what Dr. Montgomery did with her daughter, her senior year at Leonardtown High School, every single day she wrote down a little something. And so at the end of the year, she presented to Riley Montgomery, who is now a teacher, not in St. Mary's County Public Schools, not that that bothers us every day, but overall. So she kept a journal of her entire senior year and gave that to Riley, and that's just, first of all, she's probably the best parent ever, but that's a really, that's a really wonderful thing, and we want our teachers to do that for themselves. So it's been, I think it's been a great, I think it's been a great start, I think this is gonna be an incredible year. Two things that are upcoming, one is gonna be referenced when Dr. Marr, we do the back-to-school, there's the Southern Maryland College Fair that's coming up next week, the video that these, we've got rock stars who are gonna be, wait till you see the video, but that's coming up. And then right after that, on September eighteenth, we're having our first town hall meeting, St. Mary's County Town Hall meeting, we're gonna have one every single month approximately on different topics, and we just want the community to come in and engage in a, in a free-form kind of, a little bit of presentation of some information, and then an opportunity for the larger community to ask questions, to give input, to kind of help us. And the very first thing we're talking about is gonna be educational equity, and the educational equity committee work that we've done, we started at the end of last year, worked over the summer, and now ultimately is gonna culminate to a policy that comes before you for recommendation in the, in the upcoming fall. So we're gonna talk a little bit about our work, and we're gonna preview what that policy, what they framed, and then we're gonna ask for a community input, as far as the wording, clarification, the intent behind it, and so that's gonna be a really nice night, and that's September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, from six to seven thirty, at the Great Mills High School Auditorium. And with that, thank you.
Are you sure? That's it?
Positive.
Okay. All right, do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And first up is Dr. Marr.
Dr. Marr.
Another great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, good morning, I am here to present another opportunity for us to, to share our work with the community in the form of an opioid prevention grant. This is, you remember last year, we came to you with this, a similar grant in the spring to create public service announcements and involve our students in developing those messages to share with the broader community about our efforts to, to prevent the further spread of the opioid crisis and provide opportunities to help our community. The governor has released another round of funding through this grant, so we have been awarded fifty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars in this. The focus is, and it's both student and community awareness, it will include three, three activities. First is creating additional public service announcements, and you may be seeing some of these right now being aired on our local broadcast networks and streaming devices, as well as, you may have even seen the billboards that are up in, on two thirty-five that were an outgrowth of those PSAs that our students created. We're gonna be continuing that effort in involving our students to create those messages, as well as continuing the work with SLAC and the Students Leadership, Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, and getting their input on other PSAs, and keeping them involved in finding out what's important to them, how those messages can be best heard by their peers and our, and our community. And then additionally, community forums, and Dr. Smith mentioned, for example, the town hall, we do have one coming up, the October one to coincide with Red Ribbon Week will focus on drug prevention and awareness as well, and so that would be part of this effort in this grant. So with that, I ask that you approve the receipt of these funds.
Any questions?
No, I really have enjoyed seeing the students put together the public service announcements, and I think it has more of an impact for their peers than an adult just coming out and saying something, so I applaud their work that they've done, so I look forward to seeing what else they're gonna be putting together.
I would echo what Mrs. Weaver said, I would ask, on student representative programs, could you embellish a little bit?
Absolutely. So, we, we meet quarterly with the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, which involves students from each of our high schools. We also have a group that comes together from our middle schools that meets, representing their principals advisory councils. So the idea is to involve students from across all of our secondary schools. We talk about a number of topics, one of which is, is healthy habits and creating good habits for safe, a safe lifestyle. Part of that, we also, once a year, we bring in the Health Department, and they conduct focus groups with the students to gather their input, and then we use that input to create these messages. So with those programs, part of it is the, the work that is done with the SLAC and those student groups. But also, last year too, we also went to, and in working with Mike Wyon's office, did presentations during one lunch, and so we would be continuing those efforts.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Could you tell me exactly where the billboard is on Route two thirty-five, right?
There are actually four of them. They are running from the Mechanicsville juncture where the Wawa is at Route five, all the way up through Charlotte Hall. There's two, there's one, I think, right by the Mr. Tire, and then there's one about two miles up the road on the northbound side, near the Southern States, and then the southbound ones are the same ones, just the flip side of those billboards.
Oh, thank you. No questions, thank you very much.
The only, the only thing I would like to stress is that the fifty-eight thousand dollars that we will receive, it really goes into directly working with children, working with students, crafting messages, delivering those messages, and really becoming an educational tool. The opioid crisis isn't necessarily hitting our students, it's more after they leave us as young adults or parents, extended members, things such as that. So the students really are, we educate them for healthy, and then we use them as a conduit for information to some of the more at-risk groups that really are being directly impacted. That's not to say they're not being impacted, our students aren't being impacted, but the parent groups that are directly impacted. It's really been quite good. We keep on then building back into this, this is also where we, where we're putting our vaping stuff as well. So as we're talking about healthy habits and the dangers of opioid addiction, we're also saying, but please understand that vaping is just as risky and ultimately can escalate to, and we've seen obviously the consequences of it. So we layer messages on top of messages as well.
I'm glad.
May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approves and acceptance of this grant, an application, fiscal year twenty budget in the amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred, and submittal of the grant budget to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Witten, time for the maintenance plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good sir. Sorry. There it is. Sorry, it was at the end. Good morning, I'm here this morning to present and ask for your approval for the twenty-nineteen Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for Educational Facilities. The background is, is by regulation, each local or LEA is required to annually submit a comprehensive maintenance plan for educational facilities that has been approved by the Board of Education. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, or CMP, describes the LEA's strategies for maintaining a public school. After approval by the Board, copies are sent to the county commissioners and the inter-agency Commission on School Construction. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan's intent is to communicate our vision, the organizational structure, lines of responsibility, the department's status and performance, as well as our strategies we use for maintenance, replacement and renovation planning, and budgetary considerations. Our vision, simply put, and I never leave this out of the presentation every year, I talk about different parts, is, is our commitment to providing services and supportive learning environment to ensure safe, comfortable, attractive, and well-maintained facilities for students, staff, and the community. Go through department status first. The amount of work order requests submitted annually has risen by about nine thousand nine hundred fifty-eight in a ten-year timeframe from two thousand nine to FY twenty-nineteen. in a ten-year timeframe from two thousand nine to FY twenty nineteen to fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen work orders. This has affected our backlog. Our backlog has increased twenty-three days from two thousand nine to present to seventy point seven, four days. And below you see a graph. The graph depicts unplanned in red, planned work in blue. I'm happy to say again, the blue work is on the trend up. And the green trend line represents total amount of work orders. That shows the, the trend I was previously referring to over the past ten years. The average annual backlog in days from, for the past ten years in a graphic sense is two thousand nine, we were twenty-three days, and two thousand nineteen, seventy-one days. A healthy backlog is not zero. A healthy backlog is anywhere between thirty and sixty days. And that's an industry standard. It varies, but thirty to sixty days is commonly accepted as healthy. Our percent utilization is eighty-two point four eight percent and it has leveled off. I did not include a graph on that, but looking at it, has leveled off. We've worked on it for years trying to adjust work habits, adjust work assignments, and we were able to get it up to eighty-two point four eight, which is in the high end of the acceptable utilization rate. Continuing with the status, the Department of Maintenance, funding per square foot has decreased thirty-nine cent a square foot from a dollar sixty per square foot in two thousand nine to a dollar twenty-one per square foot. Dollar twenty-one per square foot into twenty nineteen. Those numbers are adjusted based on the Consumer Price Index, so that we're looking at money at a value level. Things that have affected that, since two thousand eighteen, I would like to interject into that comment that since two thousand eighteen, more maintenance-related projects have been funded through the capital improvement, building infrastructure program in critical categories, so they don't show up in the maintenance of plant category in the operating budget. The annual average funding for these types of projects has increased from fifty thousand per year pre-two thousand eighteen to about five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year in two thousand nineteen. The other thing that affects the square footage, the cost per square foot, or the, I'm sorry, the funding per square foot is the square footage increase. Just a reminder, Board, that we're still within that ten-year framework. We, we took on another three hundred and sixty thousand square foot in relocatables in two new schools. From, again, from a graphical sense, this is how those numbers would work out. And the blue line representing the budget in millions of dollars a square foot. In red represented in millions of square foot. And the green would be the budget per square foot and represented in dollars. Before I start down, there's a big comment. I'm sure most of you have heard that the inter-agency Commission on School Construction in the maintenance area also has been affected by changes and they're, they're still finalizing them currently. They're, they're, they're trying to nail down weighting of grading on Facility Condition Index. And it's a new means of funding, which Ms. Howell will talk about, I'm sure, a little bit later also. But within the maintenance department and within the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, we've always used a standard method, which employs three methods actually. We use the Schedule Replacement Repair and Refurbishment Tables, which refer to as SS, SRRs in the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. But what they do is they plot out the projected replacement fifteen to twenty years from now. And that is, that is just a, a goal, because we're, we're required to plan six years out from now, so we can plot twenty years out. The preventive maintenance inspections are short-term, give a short-term insight to where the systems actually are in their life. And those enable us to do adjustments from two to fifteen years. So if you plan something out for twenty years, at fifteen years, your preventive maintenance inspection is telling you that it's exceeding expectations, you may replot that the last sixteen years instead of fifteen years. Or you may replot it if it's not meeting expectations the last fourteen years, not the, not the fifteen years it's plotted for. The other thing that we also use, what we call annual facility inspection. And this is also for the short term. This inspects things that are not, don't require preventive maintenance when you're inspecting them. They just require an observation. Curtains, stage curtains, the condition of the stage floors, things of that nature. The result of those is we adjust each facility's age into three categories. The infant, the infant failure rate, which is year zero through seven, constant failure rate, which is year eight basically through twenty-five, and then the advanced failure rate, which is year twenty-five and on. The thing to note that is once it hits twenty-five years, by the time it hits thirty years, as depicted by the yellow line, your failure rate almost triples. So budget considerations. Ms. Howell, again, we work very close when it comes to actually planning the, how we get to the budget, especially a CIP budget. The complete, a complete renovation or modernizations is when we address interior finishes, space layouts, HVAC, roof, firearm, educational program changes, et cetera. The systematic renovations are when we focus on a combination of purely facility or building systems, such as HVAC and roof, which that's the type of renovations taking place at Park Hall and, and Hollywood Elementary School. And here, in the recent years, we've been trying to put a term to it, but we're actually defining projects, which we, we call system sustainment projects. For example, these projects will allow us to, there's, they are replacing or repairing subsystems in order to keep the, the larger system intact for a longer period of time. Recently, we did the control replacement at Great Mills High School. A couple of years ago, we did the cooling tower refurbishment at a school to keep the entire cooling system operational for a longer period of time because of how often we'll be funded to replace such systems from a state perspective. So, like I've already said, but I'll reiterate it. The capital improvement program now includes two categories, which you spoke about earlier, that more directly assist with maintenance and sustainment projects for schools. And those two categories are building infrastructure critical and programmatic. They actually were used here recently to, in combination with other funds, to, to do flooring, abatement at several schools, repaving of parking lots, some HVAC equipment replacement to keep the, the bigger system going. So they've been extremely helpful and extremely beneficial. And the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and the Capital Improvement Plan are reflective of each other and well-coordinated. And they always, I, I think that's critical to keeping any facility management, cohesion between the operating and the capital investment side. With that, I ask that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
No questions? Thank you.
So, and I know that you're, you know, constantly trying to update and redo how you go about doing the maintenance and being more efficient. But is, like, I see that the backlog days is, on the average, seventy-one. And I also looked at your, the plan that has a hundred and thirty-seven pages. But it, it talks about like how many, how many worker orders are open per month. And, I mean, you're doing a great job trying to complete them out, but there's so many coming in. Is it, are you seeing more things coming in because of aging, whatever it is? Or just that you have, let's say, new equipment that's breaking or?
I'd look back to two thousand nine to, to find a trend after looking at those numbers. I did not really find, so in the back, I think it's almost the last page of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, the percentage of work orders by, by trade or by HVAC, electric, building infrastructure. I did not find a change, a drastic change in any of the percent, so that's not changing. I'm trying to find this graph. I do believe, when you start, if you, if you look at this graph, and let me see if I can get this laser printer to work. Some of it has to do with this, we have a lot of our middle schools and high schools starting to creep into the age where they're, they're requiring a lot more attention. They're not failing, but they are requiring a lot more attention. And although each one of these, these columns or pillars represent a school, what's not reflective in here is the square footage of the school. An average high school in our system is two hundred and fifty thousand square foot, where some of our largest elementary schools like Duke and Evergreen are seventy-six thousand square foot. So the middle schools run about a hundred and forty thousand square foot. So when you, when you look at it from a square footage perspective, and there is a, a representation in the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan per square foot, yeah, we see a lot of the square footage. We've got two high schools and an elementary school at seventeen, eighteen years of age, which puts them right on the edge of the failure in five to six years, so they're requiring a lot more attention. But we haven't seen a trade category increase drastically. I guess it's the, the other half of the plan I was trying to make. We haven't seen HVAC jump up or electric or painting or interior finishes.
Yeah, I, I did find your work order closure summary, building trades, engineering trades, all of the groups totaled by facility. And it, it looks like elementary school has the highest percentage, but you've got more elementary schools too, so. I just wasn't sure, like, you know, when, when you're opening up another facility, I mean, you really need to have so many more staff members to keep up with the square footage.
We, we, we have taken on one FTE I'm very thankful for. Unfortunately, as Dr. Smith alluded to earlier, it's been extremely hard to attract people. I've, I've spent, we've spent an absorbing amount of time trying to find someone qualified to fill the position that wanted to come to work or apply at a school system right now. The economy has attracted people outside the school system. I'm hoping that, that an additional FTE will help. It is not reflective in these numbers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Witten, one number that jumped out when I was looking at last night was the, you said the pre-two thousand eighteen funding, maintenance of plant funding went from fifty thousand to five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Did I read that right?
I, I, I have to look back at the plan, but that's not the intent. What went from fifty to five hundred?
If you're on the, it's department status.
Yeah, it's, it went from fifty to five hundred.
Five hundred, it's, it's ten times.
That wasn't, that wasn't maintenance of plant funding. That's capital funding that does or assists in maintenance-type projects. Inside the Capital Improvement Plan, there's maintenance-type projects in two categories. Capital improvement, infrastructure, programmatic, and critical categories.
I see.
So what I was trying to, I apologize, but what I was trying to convey was that although the maintenance of plant dollar per square footage has gone down since two thousand nineteen by thirty-nine cent, we have seen an increase since two thousand eighteen and previous from only fifty thousand dollars a year to almost five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars a year on average. But it's, it's not in the maintenance of plant category, it's in the capital.
Right, we've moved, we've, we've moved funds over into capital improvement, building infrastructure program in a category, critical category, so we can do larger projects and jobs. For example, the Lady Marshall Dent, all of the flooring and all of that. As opposed to trying to pull it out of the maintenance pro, the maintenance budget piecemeal each year, whittle, 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 whittle away, we've said, you know, look, these are large projects, chunks of money. Let's move that over and put that there so we can actually operate and execute on it. And we're going to continue to do that because that really has proved a great way to get large projects done compreh, when they need to be done.
I noticed as in your graph where the, your facilities are getting older and older, I imagine that some of your schools still have problems with hazmat materials or is?
I, I, I can't give you an annotation, but we, 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 any school after nineteen seventy-eight, we can't even have anybody paint the wall in the school unless they're trained and licensed appropriately. And because we have schools that were built pre-nineteen seventy-eight, but have had modern additions, they still fall under that law. To answer your question directly, yes. And we do manage them, we do encapsulate them. The Department of Operations inspects for it. All of our tradesmen are aware. If they're not aware where those items are located in the school, they have strict instructions not to disturb until they find out for sure, which is through records and such that we, we keep back at the office. But we're, we are whittling them away as much as possible. We did three abatements this summer. We did some abatement at Mechanicsville Elementary School, Lady Marshall Dent, and White Marshall Elementary School. And we just got a design study back for Green Holly A., which is the portion of the building farthest from Route two thirty-five. And that will include some also, which, it's less there. It's mainly in the mechanical areas, in the mechanical room itself, but there will be some abatement that needs to be done there.
That's all I have, thank you. Doing a good job.
I have two questions. On the big document, the hundred and seventy-six page one, you, we have all, we have goals like one through six, which then you use to prioritize the projects that you have coming up. Are those goals that SMCPS came up with or ones that came down from guidance from the inter-agency commission?
Actually, I, those goals in the plan are what we came up with.
Okay. I mean, I like them, I think, I mean, it's a very.
The State of Maryland just issued their goals ironically enough.
Do they match up?
No, ma'am. Well, with the exception of number one, which is always life safety.
Right, exactly, okay. Okay, and then, just because there's been so much chatter about the condition of other counties, state of their schools in maintenance, do you ever, have you ever received any questions from anyone when you submit this plan?
No, no.
Okay.
The maintenance managers meeting, I have been asked, I have been, maintenance managers from the State of Maryland occasionally get together and talk, usually twice a year. I have been commended on.
Okay.
And the, and the database, the data, I use data to drive what we focus on.
Okay.
And our plan, it says in the introductory letter, does line up with some of the measurements that Maryland will be looking for in the future already.
All right, and then the, then the two projects that have been on there since, what is it, like, twenty thirteen? Are we just keeping those to track, like, when we have extra money available? Or just like as a tickler that we know that we have to do it, but we have higher priorities first? Because they're, they're like, they're farther down in the gold chain.
Yes.
Okay.
We, 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 yes, we, we, we try to, we try to downselect, but, but there's things that need to be done, but there's things that need to be done at different priorities.
Right, I understand.
And they just, they'll, they'll be in the deferred category typically.
Right, and, yeah, that's where they are, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks. And one of those in the deferred category that the Board would love to see done one day is Mechanicsville Elementary School. Yeah, I know, it's on there. And, but it continually gets deferred, but one day it will be done. So the bottom line is our students are safe as long as asbestos has not been disturbed by something outside of us or by us. So when that happens, it's taken care of immediately. Thanks.
What I found interesting was to look at this along with the Capital Improvements Plan. Specifically, when I was looking at your opened work orders, the fact that in, in two thousand nine, we were, you were just below ten thousand annually. And now ten years later, you're up at over fifteen thousand opened annually. And then when I looked at the State Capital Improvements Plan and the documentation specifically to Green Holly Elementary School and the HVAC there and the number of work orders that you had opened there that are de, in, listed in great detail, I think really speaks to the fact that the decision to move some funding into larger projects was a wise one because. because um the expectation is then that that huge number at Green Holly um will will decrease markedly. Um, so um and and obviously, Green Holly is is at the end where the the when you're at the advanced failure rate because of the the age of the building. But um as always, the the documentation that you present on the work that you've been doing, um, it really helps to understand why we're spending money where we are um and and why you're focused in the areas that you're focused upon. Um, and to me, that that means that that focus, you're not just willy-nilly out there, as I've seen other systems that are. Um, the kinds of questions that we ask of you and that are answered um through what you tell us, but also through this document, um, to ask those same questions of um some of your peers, I I I kinda get a deer in the headlights look. Um, so thank you for um helping to make sure that that we can defend everything that we're doing um through the information that you give us. Thank you.
I just, just to say, again, the work that's been done, um, so to Mr. Witten particularly, um, you you run your uh your department very much in a planful proactive way, and you always wanna be proactive. You know, when when you have to react to something that was unanticipated, that creates the greatest challenge. And so when we do see some of the failures that we see with HVAC, it's not really, you know, we're responding to it, but it's it's never really truly a surprise and that, you know, you with the ages of systems and stuff like that. The most important thing is you walked around to the schools. Keep in mind that within the mission statement that they run, safe, comfortable, attractive. Safe first. Our buildings are safe. If there is something that shouldn't, that needs to be encapsulated, it's mitigated, it's encapsulated, what have you. It's safe first. Comfortable is next. We do everything in our power to make sure that they are heated and cooled and everybody is completely happy. That being said, that is a, you know, there's a lot, there is a great, and HVAC, you know, that's the most.
It's gonna be ninety degrees today, so.
Right. And well, that's the most challenging place to 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 pull staff. I mean, to find people to come down here to work because it is so exceptionally profitable to be doing that, because you'll pay what you'll pay when you need to, right? And then the last is attractive. So when you walk into a building and it's gorgeous, know that it's also comfortable and safe first. And and I really, I I applaud you for the work that you do every single summer, this summer in particular. Um, I really think it it uh it speaks highly to um your leadership and the wonderful people with whom you work, including over there, Ms. Hayden and Ms. Howe, who make money, just find money and make it all just sing right along. So, thank you.
All right. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approved the twenty nineteen comprehensive maintenance plan for educational facilities.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Howe?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It would be almost apropos for Mr. Witten and I to sit here together and present our plans.
I thought that as I as I looked through both of them, I was really struck by how one supports the other.
It would almost give you a snapshot of our daily occurrence because um I'm in his office, he's in mine, and this is a, this is a year-long process. This isn't something we do for these plans. It is a continual conversation. You're gonna find other people that are involved in that as well. But I am here today um for um your consideration for the state capital improvements program. Um, things have been changing at the state. We've been talking about that for the last couple of years. So this year, they made some administrative changes. So I wanted to let you know that the book you have does look slightly different than it has in the past. Um, they did take, and we're very happy that they did. We had documents for planning and we had documents for construction, very similar data. Um, they they travel from one to the other very quickly, so they did consolidate those forms, um, which made our life much easier. Um, that is really all they really wanna see. Um, so they made the future project request, know what's coming down the pipeline, and our project summary forms of what we've we've currently got going on. They made those optional. You're always gonna see us present them because we wanna send our message of this is where we are now and this is where we need to be in the future. So we wanna make sure that we're conveying that information. Um, so we will continue to do that. Um, one thing is now it is an Excel file. It is not a Word document, which is wonderful. We've been trying to get there for a long time. And that one file gets submitted electronically, um, so we are saving um energy in terms of production of books and those type of things. Um, and while they're still working on it, we haven't got the final instructions to do on a very short timeframe. Um, they're still talking about how we're gonna submit this as PDF, so that when it goes up to the state, it will have bookmarks and they can very easily quickly go through it. So we are headed in the right way administratively to make some changes. We're still getting there. Um, in terms of funding, um, we are still on target for about four point six million yearly. Um, and that is based on a whole bunch of factors and formulas that they have, but it's basically based on the average of the last three years. So once you, we've talked about this, once you get four point six for three years, that's your target. Um, we did get an allocation um this past fiscal year um for FY twenty twenty four point seven eight, so we increased that average just a little bit. And they were very um accommodating and working with us to make sure that we were trying to meet our cash flow needs. So we were appreciative of that. Um, they did do a market um analysis of projects that are out there, but their market analysis is based on additions and renovations. Um, they really don't factor in. When you look at that building only number and building with site that we get, that's for new construction or renovation. It's really not for systemics. Um, but they did see that the market needed to increase um their budget, so they increased it by roughly four percent, um, which helped us a tremendous amount getting where we need to be. Um, they did have an analysis and discussion about the state cost share, so we are locked in at fifty-eight percent for the next two years, and they will then review it every two years. Um, that was based on the information that um Ms. Cudmore over at the County Finance Department sent. So um in the past, where we were looking like um we were headed down, our um numbers are gonna stabilize probably around fifty-eight percent. Hopefully, we'll stay there for a while, but we will stay there for the next two years. Um, when we look at the systemic budgets, which is what we typically have in our budget um book right now, um, it is based on what we feel the estimate for the project is. So we had Park Hall in Hollywood, which which just came in. And they give us a really good indication of what we're at per square foot. We are higher than um the metropolitan urban areas in the state. Um, Southern Maryland is relatively higher. We're in the hundred and thirty-six dollars a square foot range. Um, so when we look at our budgets, we took the the Hollywood and Park Hall numbers and we inflated them. We made sure that we were including the alternates that we were not able to take on those projects and the fact that um across the state, we're going up four percent. So we're hoping that the numbers that we have for this upcoming year will be very good um as we start to look at the next couple of projects. And we'll keep tweaking that as we get more information um on our projects. I'm gonna skip this one cause it's on the very next slide. Um, what I really wanna talk about, and it kinda ties into what Mr. Witten was talking about, is those projects that are on the left-hand side, the painting, the carpet, the tennis courts, the tracks, life safety, um, those are projects that are typically in the the ten-year timeframe. And this is where we get to the critical and the programmatic aspects of the budget that we did put in. Um, if you look at the top age bracket of our facilities, um, in that zero to fourteen um year range, we only have eight facilities around seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand square feet. And that's because over the last three years, we've had those two program fundings, we've spent five point one million dollars. We've really hit those those low-end um ten-year projects that we needed to hit, which was the painting and the carpet. We've really made a drastic improvement upon that. Um, and it has pulled projects that were in the comprehensive maintenance plan down to to be done. So we've really made great strides there. Um, the next category on the right are the big projects. There are the roofs, the HVACs, the paving and the chillers, um, and the floor tile. Now, paving, the chillers and the floor tile are gonna be in the programmatic and critical line items. And we do have um two point four million this year in FY twenty twenty-one that we'll be asking for from the county to make great strides on those. But then there's the roofs and the HVACs, which are the systemic projects. And if you look at that category of fifteen to thirty years, um, we have almost fifty percent of our inventory in that category, um, a little over one million square feet. So this is where you're gonna see the systemics coming in to the capital budget. And what we're truly gonna focus on for the next ten to fifteen years, barring any change in enrollment that we would have to address, we're really gonna focus on roof and HVAC systems. Um, as Mr. Witten talked about, there's a lot going on at the state level of how they're looking at facility condition index. This chart represents the state's plan for how building would be renovated or replaced. Um, so from zero to thirty years, they're really not going to be participating in much. Now, we have the aging school program and those type of things that we can do, but at at thirty years of age, they're looking for a major renovation. That could be a limited renovation, a full renovation, or a roof or a systemic. They then go out twenty years later, and they're saying that that building at fifty years old has reached its lifespan, and they would be looking at the replacement cost of that facility versus a full renovation. So they're really looking at a fifty-year lifespan of a facility. Um, we don't do that. What we do is in that zero to ten to fifteen years is when we're hitting our programmatic and our critical, which we just talked about. We're painting, we're we're handling rooftop units and those components. Um, we're, as Mr. Witten called, we're calling them system sustainment pieces to keep things moving. Um, when we get to twenty-five to thirty, we're hitting those other components that we talked about. We're doing roofs and HVAC. Um, and in between all of that, we're looking at other projects we need to do, like bathroom fixtures, science lab, um, PE, fine arts, public address systems and furniture, which is something we do have to consider. And then ultimately, what we're looking is after we've done all of that, to go back and repeat the cycle. Um, we are getting a lot longer than fifty years out of our facilities. Um, we have buildings that originally can go back sixty-five, sixty-five, sixty-eight years. So we would just start that cycle over again. Um, we might consider a full renovation in there for educational components cause that's a piece that the state doesn't really look at in terms of a lot of this is in the renovation we can, but how do we address those when we're doing lifecycle replacements of systems? So this is an ongoing discussion. Um, facility condition index is going to greatly impact this because what's gonna happen is you're gonna have buildings that have, across the state, that have not had any of this done, that we have been doing. They're gonna get a higher priority ranking. So we'd start talking about the funding and how we're going to do this. Um, our primary focus is gonna remain the lifecycle replacement of key um system components. Um, we've aligned our project schedules to ensure that we have the funding that we need to make them viable to start based on multi-year funding. We know that most of our projects are taking two years to get funded through the state, and we lock in on that first year. So we're working very closely to try and make sure the budgets are aligned. Um, we are still in a point right now where enrollment does not support new capacity, but we're continuing to monitor that. And this year, um, in the upcoming budget request, we do have the local capacity study programmed. And in the future, we have to consider what the sustainability is of four point six million a year um and what the direction's gonna be as a result of the facility condition index. The chart that I have at the top is something that we've been watching very closely for the last um two to three years. We're gonna continue to monitor it. If we're talking that state line, um, in FY twenty twenty-one, we're asking for five point three million, a little over what we're asking for. So we know in the four point six, we know a little of it'll roll over. So in FY twenty-two, we have four point seven. Um, FY twenty um three, we're right there at five point three. When we get to FY twenty twenty-four and FY twenty twenty-six, we're gonna hit a bubble. And that's because we've got a very large project coming through. We're gonna start getting to the high school HVACs. Their share is gonna take two to three years to get. But if we put it in at two years, this is what happens. We get to these almost eight million dollar requests. And that's based on today's dollars. We know that they're gonna escalate over that time. So it is something that we're constantly in contact with the state about and working with, but this is the first time in FY twenty twenty-four when the four point six is really going to hurt. And we're gonna have to work with them closely to make sure that we can get the funding that we need, um, knowing that we don't want to extend three and four years trying to accumulate funds to do a project cause we're locked in. So it's on our radar and we're continuing to work with them. Um, after that, so this is starting to talk FY twenty twenty-seven, cause every year we add a year. So this year, we added FY twenty twenty-six, which included Chopticon. Coming down the pipeline in twenty twenty-seven, we'll be looking at Leonard Town um HVAC. Um, the two offices, central office and division of supporting services need HVAC. White Marsh, um, Benjamin Banneker need HVACs. Chopticon needs its roof and Town Creek needs its roof. Total estimated cost of those projects alone is almost forty-seven million. Um, the state's share at fifty-eight percent would be twenty-seven million, and it would take us six years to get all of the funding for those. So it is something that we are desperately uh gonna have to work out with them is how the four point six works. So it is something we are working on and know that we need to to keep the timing of these going forward. Our state request this year um for FY twenty twenty-one is the five point three, and that is for the second year of funding for Green Holly Switchgear and HVAC. Um, it is, should be the last installment of the state funding for that project. And it is the first year of funding for um Diner's Roof and HVAC, which will hopefully be all funded this year. But knowing that we're at five point five, I've allowed for the cash flow to carry us over to the second year. Um, following that, in FY twenty twenty-two is the request for funding for Mechanicsville's modernization, um, a project that we've all near and dear held close to us. Um, then in twenty twenty-three, we have Town Creek's HVAC and Dents Modernization. In twenty twenty-four is Great Mills High School's partial roof and Tiny Point's HVAC. In twenty twenty-five is Green Holly's um Building B HVAC systemic and roof um systemic renovation for A and a portion of B that connects together. One of the things we're doing right now is we look at the Green Holly A HVAC systemic. We're looking at going ahead and converting to natural gas. Um, and that would save significantly on the operating side, but we would go ahead and make the connection. So B side would be converted to natural gas at this point in time as well, um, and then we would just replace their system. But we're looking at making the whole facility through this current project, um, a natural gas school. And then FY twenty-six is when we in bring in Chopticon's HVAC systemic. In combination with this, the money that we're asking for the critical and programmatic, the system sustainment components, you will see pieces of some of these schools coming in. It may be um a unit um control, or it may be a chiller um or cooling tower. Those are the things we're doing to keep them moving. The state has historically funded systemics at twenty-five years. They're, on the maintenance side of it, they're recognizing, and Mr. Witten alluded to it, fifteen to twenty is probably the more reasonable approach to that. However, given the funding that the state has to give, they're at twenty-five to thirty years. So we're gonna look at how we can keep those components running on a sustainment level while we're waiting to do the HVAC. So our next steps, if if um if approved today, we will um, we've already taken some um of the package over. We'll ta- take the remis- um remainder of the package over to the county. Um, and we will s- um have the meeting with them on um September twenty-fourth. Um, based on their approval, um, we will then submit to the IAC by their deadline of October fourth. We do have a staff meeting, um teleconference with the IAC in October on the fifteenth, um, so that we can review our document. Um, this is a little different, and this started happening last year. On November first, the governor will announce his preliminary budget, and the IAC will put out their first round recommendation. Our last day to um submit any amendments is November twenty-seventh, and in December, the IAC will act on the first round. So we hope to have um a significant um funding approach then so that we can start um for bidding of the two projects in the spring. So with that, I will entertain any questions you have.
No questions. Thank you.
Um, I guess you'll know better. Wait, what is it, September, where we actually go through and do the head count?
September thirtieth.
So September, so September thirtieth, we do a snapshot of all the children enrolled, and all the schools have to have all their enrollment data up up to, you know, those kids are attending. It then takes October and November before we get reconciled back at the state level, the actual verified enrollment numbers, which then lead us to December, which we communicate over to the county commissioners, so they can then take a look at per pupil funding based on enrollment for this year for next year.
I guess I was looking at um as far as your plan for enrollment as far as like the elementary schools and things like that. You know, may, I could be completely far off, but each of the schools I went to, like I said, there were parents in there registering their students. And I know like at the point that I went into Spring Ridge, even though they, there were, I'm gonna tell you, there were like ten parents standing in there to register their kids on the first day. But at that point, she said they were forty over last year's enrollment at that point.
At what, at what school?
Spring Ridge.
Yeah, Spring Ridge is, Spring Ridge is seeing a bubble.
So, and I know every, every school that we went to, well, of course, except for Fairlead and the Charter School, they were over what they had last year. And so that's what I was just curious to find out, when we would really see where our enrollment numbers were.
Well, so we watch the enrollments every single day, and we run the report every single day. So right now, we're at eighteen thousand three, are we still at three or are we dropping?
We were dropped just a little.
Yeah, we drop, we drop like twenty. So what happens? So what our schools do is they have the kids that rolled over from last year, they're rolled up, and then they get the new kids in and. and then they get the new kids in, and they, so they have this entire month to what we call scrub out their actual enrollment, to verify how many kids are really in each one of the classes. A peek behind the curtain, if you're a principal, you aren't necessarily going to scrub out the non-attending students in the first week of school, because Dr. Montgomery back there is also running a daily report to see what the class sizes are. So, so on September thirtieth, we'll have a very, we'll have a very realistic number. We'll know exactly the head counts of our kids. That then has to be verified at the state level when they do a cross LEA reconciliation. We do see several sites that are up in kindergarten in particular. And we do see sixth grade and ninth grade have experienced a bubble of kids. And why is that? Because the, because the county is growing, and they're bringing in kids. But the kids are, it's not, it's not the way it was, where you would move into a county and you would enroll a child. What happens is, people are moving into a county, and they're taking a look at all the other educational opportunities that they have here. They're looking at parochial schools, they're looking at home instruction. There, there's a whole host of things that they're doing. And what we see is that they, they come to us in sixth grade, because they've probably finished an elementary program, perhaps alternatively are in their home. So suddenly, they appear in sixth grade, or they're appearing in ninth grade as they've gone through a program, and then they present themselves on our doorstep. Makes it very, very challenging for Ms. Howe to project out the enrollment, although our enrollment projections are historically...
One to one and a half percent off.
One, one and a half percent off.
Which is definitely well within the two to three, that's usually the historical average across the country.
Yeah, the, I mean, the challenge is that that doesn't mean that Evergreen Elementary School won't see an increase of, you know, twenty-some more students than we thought at kindergarten. And that's what we do. So, so we will be able to tell you on September thirtieth pretty much where we are for enrollment. Now, the county commissioners are going to ask us for that number, and then they're going to say, why don't you know that number? Why can't you tell us that number? What's going on with that number? Don't you know how many kids are in your school? And we say, we do know how many kids, but we have to send it off officially to the state. They check to make sure that all of our individual student ID numbers aren't replicated someplace else, because each one of those equates to about fourteen thousand dollars worth of funding. So you can see why that becomes extremely important. But we'll have the final numbers for everybody by November.
So and all the indicators that we've had, that we've talked about, are that we should be growing. But as Dr. Smith talked about, parents have choices. And we have to react somewhat on my end when we do the projections of when they make a change in that. So kindergarten being up is where we think we should be. So I'm kind of happy to see that number coming.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Alvey, I heard you mentioned earlier that your projections are in constant dollars. Is that present value dollars?
Yes, the state requires that our budget be in constant dollars.
So we're talking two thousand twenty-five, that seven million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in real dollars could be...
It could be ten, it could be over ten, yes. If we're going, if we're going at a rate of around four percent per year, which is anywhere from four to nine has been the state's average, we could be well over ten million dollars.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Any questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I will say again that I am just absolutely struck by the, the change at the state level in how they approach this. You know, you look back to Yael Stensler and, and Dr. Lever, who had understood what we understand, which is, you can't just look at the here and now. You have to look at where you're going to be in five years, where you're going to be in ten years, where you're going to be in fifteen years. And if you don't plan for that, when you get to that point, you will not be ready to address anything. And so the fact that Mr. Gurrell has decided to just look at right now, and that's it, is extraordinarily frustrating. And, and I think it's both literally and figuratively short-sighted. So I truly hope that there will be a change at the state level. I understand that other places have not been as forward-thinking and planful as St. Mary's County has been. But that's not the issue for our taxpayers.
Four point six million is very constraining. I think what we've done in the past with Dr. Stensler and Dr. Lever was, we worked with what we needed in, you know, in concert with whatever one else needed, because we know that there are other needs across the state.
Sure.
But when you're looking at four point six, it dictates how you have to schedule things versus scheduling things the way they make logical sense sometimes. Or that they support what is going on in, in other counties. It, it's just a, it's almost like they're just going to write the check for four point six, and how you spend it is how you spend it. And that collaboration that we have locally and within the tri-county area doesn't exist right now at the state to have that. And I think it, I think we're all trying to convey that, that we need to sit down and talk at the table. Facility Condition Index is going to change things even more.
And, and, you know, from an efficiency and a cost-effectiveness standpoint, to string something out over that long is going to ultimately cost more.
Well, I think the thing we think about in our office is, when the time comes that we build another facility in this county. Four point six million on an elementary school that's now sitting at a cost of thirty-two million to replicate what we have, think about getting four point six off of that. It's going to change the whole dynamic of how we look at, at things.
Thank you for letting me vent, I appreciate it.
We have the quote of the day. Short-sighted figuratively and literally is, is a pretty apt description of what we're, of what we're seeing.
We need one of those word PowerPoint things of all the times that Kathy has complained about. Over the course of the last four years.
Just get used to it, because he, I'm going to be doing it as long as I'm sitting here and as long as he's sitting there.
Whenever you build a long-term budget to a number, it's, it's not a good budget. If you build it to a thoughtful, planful need, that makes sense. And that's, that's what, what we, what we had in the past, and we miss it.
Well, in the whole process that we're sitting here today with the comprehensive maintenance plan and the comprehensive capital plan, that is that comprehensive thought that does go up for their review. I would be remiss if I didn't sit at this table and say that the money that the commissioners are giving us through that sustainment project is crucial to what we're doing. And we are greatly appreciative in our, in our building for all of that funding, because that five point one that we've gotten over the last three years has allowed us to, to keep this going. So I, I definitely want to thank the county staff and the commissioners for that support on that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approved FY twenty twenty-one, FY twenty twenty-six State Capital Improvements Program for submission to the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction as presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Montgomery and Dr. Jaffers.
The pentacles of brevity both. Right?
It, it does say something that if... I was going to say, that the first thing I look at when I look at the agenda and who's going to be presenting is when the exhibit pops up. How many slides did Dr. Jaffers put in this time?
If it takes more than a minute to download the PDF, you know you're in trouble.
There's not forty slides today.
Good morning, Dr. Jaffers, it's good to see you, sir.
Good to see you guys. I talked more in on the fiftieth slide, so... Okay, so we're here to talk today about our data. It's my Super Bowl, when we get our MCAP results back, that's, it's informative, and it's uplifting. It's, it really validates what we do here and moving forward. So just a brief recap of what PARK is. PARK has gone away. We are now strictly dealing with the acronym of MCAP, which is the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program. And as you can see, three to eight for ELA in math, as well as Algebra I, and also ELA ten in the high schools. So for graduation requirements. And all of the assessments are aligned to the MCCRS, which is the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards. These assessments define the knowledge and skills. They talk about grade level mastery. And again, they're hoping that that translates into fully prepared, fully prepared to enter the college and/or career workforce at the culmination of their high school experience. In nineteen twenty, as we said, Maryland is moving to MCAP, which the name has changed this past year, but now the substance moving forward will be, the tests will be shorter in length. And the, the discussion is that the student performance data will be even more actionable than it is now. So we'll be able to take the data and be able to inform our instruction further. Reminder, the tests, scale score tests are between six fifty and eight fifty. And we have five levels. We have Level one, two, three, four, five, which is not, did not yet meet, partially met, approaching expectations. And expectations are grade level expectations. Four is when we meet the grade level expectations, and Level five's for those students, those have met, have actually exceeded the expectations for the grade level as set by the psychometricians. In Maryland, we have Level four and Level five denote grade level or what we call course proficiency. So those are the expectations in Maryland as far as defining what proficiency is. As you can see in our graph here, we have our courses that we've tested against and juxtaposed with the Maryland performance and the differences between the two cohorts.
Can I ask you something while we're on this one, so we don't have to go back? Is, are you following along with each grade level to make sure that they are consistently either at least staying the same or going up? So like, as you would follow along, I see what it is for grade six, but have you followed to grade seven from last year?
You're talking about looking at growth, how they, so how the, when the cohort grew? We do look at, we look at that as well. We, we didn't present that information today, but we did, we do look at that as well. So you can see on this chart, and this is showing, we would have, we have all greens with, with where we are, comparing SMCPS to the state of Maryland. And for every grade level on every test, we beat the state average, everything. There's no red on that chart.
And I, this is, if you can go, just go back one slide, and I think this is important. So when you, so when you're given a test, there's, they've, they've scale scored the test, and then they give five levels. Look at it like this. Five is an A, four is a B, three is a C, two is a D, and one is an F. We're all familiar with that, right? There's A, B, C, D. So when you get a report card, you're like, F, I didn't do it. D, man, I do some stuff, but not that much. C, you know, I pretty much got most of it, right? B, I feel pretty good, I mean, I'm meeting the expectations. A, I'm an A student, right? Next slide. When we look at this and somebody says, how can you possibly have a test? Whereas the state, the entire state of Maryland, only twelve point five percent got a, were proficient in eighth grade math. And, and look, it's not. Twelve point five percent across the state earned an A or a B on that assessment. All right? And in St. Mary's County, twenty-two point eight percent had an A or a B. When you put in meeting expect, or the approaching, we'll call it Level three, or C, as I like to look at it, that number goes up to about seventy-five, eighty percent, which, which totally makes sense. Maryland can't get out of its own way. It's designed to test that delivers an exact bell curve, and then only wants to give credit for this side. Everybody that's been involved with kids forever knows that the reason why there's an A, B, C, D, F is because that's the best way to look at data. Whenever we look at this, and I know that there was an Enterprise story that talked about the fact that they're plummeting and scaling, what have you, I mean, that really is what that is. That being said, we use the data every single year to inform. Because every, if you're a teacher and you have a child that gets an F, what do you want to do? You want to get them to D. D to C, C to B, B to A. You want all kids to get As and Bs, because that's what everybody wants. That's honor roll, right? But you know, you don't forget the kids that got Cs. We're going to go with the new MCAP, it's going to be the new thing, it's going to be the thing. The data's going to be the data. But recognize when you look at it, that's what you're looking at. How many people got As and Bs?
It's an artificial measure, and it's a snapshot in time.
Snapshot in time.
It's the, using Unify and Performance Matters that gives the teachers an almost daily look at everybody graphically, so they can see who they need to move where.
So before we move on, I think, just I want to perseverate on this, because what belies this data here, and to Ms. Weaver's point, I mean, we spent an awful lot of time not just talking about the proficiency, which is the Level fours and fives that Dr. Smith talked about. But we want to make sure these Level ones from the year before, or the Fs, as Scott referenced, are moving to Level two. And what I, what I like about the test psychometrically is, any net gain of one, or even zero, means we have students that are assimilating the next grade level content, but they're not regressing down to a, you know, they're not losing ground. So if we go from a seven hundred to a seven oh one, what's not reported in the Enterprise or the Post is those, although those kids aren't proficient, they are still making gains. And, and that's what we, we talk to our schools all the time about. It's not just proficiency, but it's about the growth. And, and we have to discuss those two in conjunction with, with this data. The second thing that, that we want to make sure we understand and that belies this data as well is, homogeneously, we test our, our, our math. Meaning, we, when we move to seventh grade math, we are accelerating our students. So not every seventh grade student's taking the Math Seven Assessment. Contrasted that with ELA. ELA, on the other side, we're all hetero, heterogenously grouped. Every student in seventh grade is taking the seventh grade test, no matter how advanced they are. So I, I do feel like we have to make sure that everybody's talking, beating up on the math side. I'm a math guy. We have to be fair, because we have students that are, that are accelerating out of their grade level content in math, and they're not, not doing that in ELA. So just make sure we mention those two.
Because in eighth grade, we pull out the eighth, our high achieving eighth graders, they take the algebra assessment, so they're not taking the, the eighth grade assessment.
It begins in STEM seven, our STEM seven students are moving to Algebra I. So that's when that process of acceleration begins. Just another way of just presenting the graph, we like to differentiate as educators. We want to, multiple modes of, of meeting our students where they are. And you are my students today, so we are going to show you a bar graph as compared to the tabular data that we just showed you.
Blue beats orange.
Yes, blue beats orange. And that's what, you know... Dr. Montgomery talks about context. And I think when we initially got these data points, again, we didn't exhale. We took these in stride, and we wanted to see in the larger context how we performed against the state.
This was a visual that MSDE presented at the state board meeting, and, and we thought it was a pretty good, pretty good display to show you what, what the data looks like across the state. And St. Mary's, so nobody had a growth of greater than five percent on this particular test, which was ELA three through eight. Nobody had greater than five percent growth, so they would have had dark green. We had a growth of, of up to five percentage points with everybody else pretty much in the state of Maryland. And then there were many, many counties that did not have any growth at all, that had no change.
And that's all elementary kids.
It's all elementary across the state.
And all middle school kids. So they gave an assessment that already had very low scores, and the whole state, basically, nobody increased more than five percentage points.
That's what it is.
Again, this is, this, the data is presented in a different way. This is rank order on the left. You can see the, the counties on the left, highest to lowest performing in grades three to eight on ELA. Again, St. Mary's is in the top ten, again, beating the state, which is always important, because context is important when, when it comes to this assessment. You can get down into the data, you can see on the far right, the proficiency aggregate, proficiency for their three to eight, and then the change is in parentheses from the year before.
And this is the, the graph showing ELA ten. And as you can see, there was, you know, one county that had a decrease of five or more percentage points, and one that had up to five. And then, you know, they're all over the place with, with this particular one. But we, we sat, we were pretty pleased with our growth here, looking, especially when we compared ourselves to the state, because we had the greater than five percent increase there for ELA ten. And ELA, and ELA ten and Algebra are the ones that we're concerned about, because students have to reach a certain score to have a graduation requirement. So as of anybody that's going to take the ELA ten or, you know, the Algebra test this year, they have to have a four or a five the way the current rules are set to state Maryland. Yep, they have to have an A or a B on this assessment to graduate high school.
And again, just the note here, it's one of, one of six counties that had more than five percent increase for ELA ten, which is exceptional. That's, that's a really good metric for us. That's, that's a really good metric for us to take home.
I love the fact that, that the entire tri-county region.
That's right.
That's impressive.
It jumps out. Absolutely. And here's just, again, the data presented in a different way, ELA ten, rank order, top to bottom. We are seventh in the county, or in the state when it comes to proficiency on ELA ten. Math, again, this is the data against the state, blue being St. Mary's County, Maryland being orange. And as we move, you know, here's our math.
So, yes, and when we look at Math Three Through Eight, obviously, when we first got these scores, when we got them in July, we were not very happy. And then Dr. Jaffers references data in context. So at first, we were like, oh, we, we did not see growth on this, on that assessment. We were not pleased. But just last year, we said, okay, we didn't do a great job until we saw the state data. And then we said, okay, we're looking pretty good. And the same thing happened this year. We first get it and we look at it and we're not really happy until we see the data in context and see how everybody else did on the assessment. And, and we had no change, but nobody showed growth on that assessment across the, across the state.
And again, this isn't a grade level. This is all students in third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade showed no growth or lost growth across the state.
Yep.
So does that say more about the test than the student preparation?
Absolutely. I mean, I think we have to, we have to call it like it is. I think
Without doubt.
It's how we, how they compile the data points. I mean, I think our teachers, and we don't want to lose sight of the fact that our teacher, we would be remiss. Our teachers are doing a fantastic job. They're taking the standards, they're teaching to mastery, they're teaching to remediation or acceleration. But to, yes, yes, I do, I do believe the psychometrics and the way the data's compiled seems to be something that's askew.
Well, it's almost, it's nine hundred thousand children that are enrolled in school. And let's assume that two-thirds of them are in elementary and middle, so well over a half million kids. And the test is perfectly designed to get the results that it got, so.
Again, this is for our math, as Scott mentioned, aggregatedly, three to eight. We are in the top ten, I think, or eighth on this metric of proficiency of four and five. And again, what we do that we don't announce and talk about is go into our level threes, our level twos and our level ones by school and break that down disaggregatedly to see where our success is and where we have some improvement to, to address.
And the last, the last map shows where we are with respect to our algebra performance. And again, we got the data, weren't exactly pleased with it until we saw where everybody else was in the state. There was one county that, that showed greater than five, five percentage points growth. That was Kent. But Alex can show you the next.
Kent also has less than two thousand students.
Yes. I was just gonna say, the
Could have been like one family really just knocked it out of the park.
Right. The, the entire, the entire student enrollment of Kent County from pre-K to twelfth grade would fit in Leonardtown High School and have room left over.
I didn't want to say that publicly, but I'm glad.
Did really well on that test.
But it's also about where they started.
Recruiting families, is that what your next graph?
Christ, Mary's County family moved to Kent.
Yeah, and also, I guess the point here is that, since Scott mentioned, I'll, I'll reference Kent County. They, they started below the state average. So again, they're, you know, normally, you know, it's like losing the last five pounds, you know. It's, you know, if you don't have a lot of pounds to lose, you're not gonna grow a lot. But if you have a lot to lose, you certainly should show a lot more green, I guess. And we don't have a lot of I guess I didn't know if you were following me.
The last five pounds, yes.
But again, this, this, this algebra data is every single person who sat for the Algebra test throughout the entire school year of twenty eighteen, nineteen. So again, we used to, we used to have a much more robust system that it actually tracked by cohort. And you'd only be ever looking at like the class of twenty eighteen, nineteen, you would know what their score was. You wouldn't, you wouldn't see all the people glommed in together. So you've got seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders, repeat test takers because you have to repeat, take the test before you can sit for, and, and go, go to bridge. So you have some kids that are just like, oh, I'll take it again, I have to, whatever. It, it's, it's, it's challenging data. That's state-level data. Please know that in our county, on our assessments, it's much more finessed. We know exactly where, where we are, what cohort they are and everything like that.
And we meet, we start with the principles in July when the data first comes in. And we sit down and we go through all the data, we go through the aggregate data, we go through the disaggregated data. And then we take it and we, we bring it down to the student level and make decisions for students about appropriate interventions and what they need to be doing based on that data. And we get them all set up for the beginning of the year. And then we set that aside and we start looking at our formative assessments. And we start looking at our benchmark assessments. And we start looking at, you know, mastery of standards on our curriculum. So, and we'll, we're, we're in the process right now of collecting all the new information on the students.
If you're keeping score, I mean, we are seventh in the state for Algebra One, so I, I think
I'm sure Dr. Jaffers is not keeping score.
I am keeping score. I am keeping.
Way above our weight class when you lay that against our per pupil allocation.
Absolutely right.
Using every dollar really, really well towards educating every child.
Very good point. As mentioned earlier, we talked about transitioning to the new MCAP this year. And again, that's where the test will become shorter, and we should have more operational data. Also included in this MCAP umbrella would be the MISA, and just a government, as well as the social studies assessment in grade eight. And I believe that is on the docket for this upcoming year.
Well, they're still waiting on the MISA high school assessment to have it count.
Two years away, yes.
Yeah. Because it's an, it's a Maryland integrated science assessment, and where do you put it? If you put it at the end of biology, is that the best fit? Or what if they take earth-based science? Or what if they're taking physics? And so it's, there's a great deal of challenge when you have an integrated science assessment and you have a high school model that decide, that, you know, is very content-specific. And a, and a Maryland certification standard that says that you have to be certified in biology to teach biology, chemistry, whatever. So the whole, one of the, one of the more challenging thought bubbles of, of MSDE. Also, the, the high school assessment and all science assessment is not required under ESSA. Maryland State Department of Education decided to make it part of their ESSA plan and put it in. So, interest, and also then make it a graduation requirement. So it's, you know.
And this, this is a great example of, well, it makes sense instructionally to have an integrated sort of platform for science. When it comes to sort of tracking the data and having an assessment, you can see the contradiction. There seems to be a paradoxical, um, contradiction in, um, in, in and of itself with regard to the instruction, which is the most important thing always. One, one of the things that we have here is just sample ISR, which is the individual student report. Let me see if I can do this here.
I can save you if you don't remember. I know what I'm doing.
Yeah, so let me see. Do I have that right?
Yeah. Daddy, Dr. Jaffers.
Okay, now make it bigger, Dr. Jaffers, because there's, that doesn't, that's not helpful. Yes.
There we go.
No, even go, you can scroll around on it.
Try one more time.
Oh, that's great.
So what, um, so this is, uh, the, this insert is the identical to the, to the state. They've issued an MCAP parent guide that we're considering blasting out to our parents. This inserts the, the identical to what the state is providing this year, even though it's fifteen, sixteen dated. And this is what, if I'm a parent, I should be getting and receiving something like this in the mail, or at least coming home with my student as to where their student is. And you see the context, the school average, the district average, the state average, and the cross-state average. I'm not sure if they still have the cross-state average because I'm not sure how many other states are using the same assessment. But at this point, you can, this is just a nice little handy sort of compilations, synopsis of, of the assessment and how your, your student performed, so.
So if I was a parent and slide up to the seven forty-five, right? So on one hand, I could say, my child is not meeting grade level standards, so everything is terrible. Or I could say, as I have been taught since way back when we first had, that level one is an F, level two is a D, level three is a C, level four is a B, level five is an A. If my child has a seven forty-five and it's a scaled score, that's kind of like they're a high C, like a seventy-seven percent. So if I was gonna give them a grade on their, on their, in ELA, they're getting like a seventy-five, seventy-six percent. Because it's a scaled score. Because you actually receive an F, you get an F because you got zero points? Or do you receive an F because you get fifty-nine point five or less, right? So, I mean, this is, if you just do that, that common sense thing, then suddenly it makes sense, right? Doesn't it just make sense? And I don't understand why, because I know that there's psychometric stuff involved. And I know that all you math people are gonna get in, and they go, well, no, that's not, that's not how it's worked. It's a scaled score and there's a proficiency standard it's aligned to. No. This child has like a high C gathering and understanding of ELA for third grade. And our job is to move that seven forty-five up over seven fifty so that we can see that they're and then next year, move it a little more and a little more and a little more and a little more.
What would be great is if they had, the backdrop would be the score from last year, if they saw what their scores were from last year.
Well, that would be a lot of, that'd be a great deal of work.
Growth or not growth.
That would make, that would be helpful.
That'd make too much sense.
Yeah. Well, I, I think you should get rid of level one, two, three, four. If you just put F, D, C, B, A, just like our star ratings. We have star ratings, but they're not related to anything like giving your school an A or a B or a C or a D or an F. But that's exactly what we have. So you're a five-star school, but we can't call it an A-plus school. And you're a, you're a level five kid, but that's not an A. But it is if you actually have ever worked with children in the classroom.
And how many parents do you think distill this down and just look at it in terms of, you know, proficiency or whatever? Or how many look at it and go, A, B, C, D, F, my kid got a C, my kid got a B?
I hope everybody does. That's the way I always looked at it. Because I had children that had threes. And I didn't like to think that they were not meeting grade level expectations because they all graduated in on time and gone off to college and won't have you. I said, hey, that, we need to move that up. I want to have you getting at least a B. If not an A. Some of us get straight As all of the time. But over on this side, the Smith side, they kind of, they kind of get to work every day, work really hard. Sometimes we got Cs. Sorry.
That's, um.
Any questions? That's it, right?
After that.
Are you, are you next?
Yeah, he's next again.
Because I want to talk about data that matters.
Here's the whole takeaway on this, from my perspective. Get ready. All right. First of all, it's an entirely computer-based test, right? So I have third graders, I have third graders who are what, nine years old? That are with a mouse and toggling and on the ELA stuff, reading a paragraph, and then for the love of heaven, trying to type. Right? When all they have done for the entire school year up to the state is write in a journal, right? And I can tell you that because my son wrote in a journal. He did not type his essays on a computer, ever, right?
Well, because part of, part of education and development is that you need to learn how to operate a pencil and, and write, because we are not always gonna have a keyboard in front of us.
So the chart that shows, you know, that the state basically is very poor at educating students, to me, is just a vehicle for MSDE to go to the state legislature and say, look, we have failing schools. This is what we need to change. So, um, I think that what, if you look at the other chart that shows these charts here, that show what we have four and three, you know, the, right? If you, if you expand it out to see how many children are at a three level or above within St. Mary's County, that to me is much more telling than the chart that they put out that only shows the four and five proficiencies.
The heat map.
So you'll have to bring it back up, you're good.
I do have two questions. So just to confirm, even though the MCAP is a new test, it would still be a graduation requirement for current sophomores?
Yes.
Okay. And then the MISA test, it's no longer being given for chemistry, right?
Yeah, no, there's.
It, it's, it's
It, it depends. You, you have to take the MISA at some point in your high school career. And if we say, everybody in tenth grade has to take it, then you, you may be in biology, you may be in chemistry, you might be in physics, you might be
I thi- I think it'll be dictated by the acceleration of, or not of students. So yes, some, some students may be in a biology class taking, as, as Dr. Smith said, or they may be in a chemistry or maybe in physics or, or space. It all depends how that's gonna be translated.
So it'll be by grade instead of by subject?
But, but, yes, but they might be taking it at the end of a different course, depending on what course that they're in.
It'll probably be driven by course as opposed to grade.
Grade, yeah. I mean, and that's gonna be the challenge. Because the state didn't mandate that we do integrated science at the high school level. They could have. And there's, and there's, there's, there's background that says that maybe that works. So you'd have an integrated, everybody would have the same Science Nine and then Science Ten. And then you'd have the Maryland Integrated Science Assessment at the end of the tenth grade year. That would make sense. But that's not the way high schools are structured. We have chemistry and biology and physics and earth space. Originally, when the high school assessment was first generated, way back at the turn of the century, because I can say that, these were all supposed to be modeled after the New York State Regents exams, which are end-of-course exams based on content. So you get one for English nine, ten, eleven, twelve. You have one for Biology, Chemistry, Physics, Social Studies, World History. You have one for each one of them and you have to pass a battery of them. So they originally introduced, I think, twenty-two high school assessments. And then they realized, oh, oh my gosh, we can't do this. And they whittled them down. And then they said, well, for no child left behind, we have to select some. And that's how we ended up with what kids traditionally had in tenth grade, Biology, Algebra, English Ten, and A, and Government.
When, I, I just, I find it very interesting that MSDE publishes the cohort graduation rates and the standardized testing dates at two different times.
Yes.
Because if I look at this, I'm like, well, good heavens, in my ELA ten, I only have fifty-six for, or, no, sorry, forty-two point six percent of the students that, to my reading, would be that are on track for graduation. But yet
You're a ninety-four percent graduation, on time.
Well, for us, it's fifty-six and a half, but yet I have a ninety-four percent graduation rate. So either we do one heck of a job in our junior and senior year or going back to your point that the test is flawed and that it's only serving a purpose in order to generate numbers that will
Well, I would say the test doesn't, the test, the test is giving the results, is, the test is, I think, is a, is a fairly decent assessment. It's providing really actionable data that we're able to be brought back. It's the framing that only As and Bs are proficient
Correct, right.
that is absolutely challenging to me. The, if you just, if you just said, here, you're gonna take the test and you're gonna get an F, D, C, B, or A on it, I'd be all for it. Because the kids that get an F, we really need to work on. The Ds have to move to Cs, the Cs should move to B.
Right. That's why you need to go back to that chart.
Right, right.
So.
And, and be mindful that we do have alternative pathways to graduate. If a student doesn't pass this test outright, we can do a bridge project to get them over.
After taking it twice.
Right.
And failing and, and not getting a four or five twice. But they might get a C twice.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I
Yes, I mean, I'm interested to see how the Bridges program that was implemented in math, just in the back of your mind in all of your charts, right? Because this year, this was
This is year two.
No, this was
This will be year two.
Year two of Bridges implementation.
That we're currently in. But the testing was year one for the third grade.
That's correct.
Right.
So the third grade group is the one to watch. Because they were the ones that will have the benefit of it the whole way through, correct? Because
Except they didn't have it in K one, two. And so we're looking at, you know, so we're looking at that intervention. We're thinking that the younger that the kids are starting with that program, the better off they're gonna be. So in a few years, when we have our third graders taking it that had Bridges from kindergarten on up, they're gonna be well-prepared because they've had the rigor from kindergarten on.
But they, but the, the third grade scores right now for this group that I have on the screen is the first year the Bridges was implemented.
Of Bridges, yes.
They have a full year of third grade Bridges, yes.
Right, okay.
And we saw some
And standards-based instruction.
We saw some significant gap mitigation in a few of our disaggregated cohorts, particularly
So it'll be interesting to follow them.
Yeah. Particularly African-American in grade three. So we, we were very, we're hopeful that that trend will continue in the future, yep.
Okay. Anyone else wanna beat up on MSDE? Nope, okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify, we, I love, we don't, we don't have a problem with the assessment. We have a problem with saying that only a four or a five is grade level standard.
We do have a problem with the assessment in that it is all on computer-based.
Oh, yeah, I definitely
And I think that is very unfair, especially
Well, we're just, we're, we're now gonna move on to talk about AP, PSAT, SAT, all of that stuff. And that's not computer-based.
I'm not on this presentation, but I'll stay just to regulate, Dr. Jaffers.
Good idea.
But I, I do think, Ms. Melly, what you're saying is, you know, sometimes we're not transferred. And I think your point being is, we're not maybe I think your point being is, we're not maybe, we're not adept at transferring knowledge in grade three. Developmentally speaking, we may have a lot more, uh, students may have more inside than they're able to translate. And I think that's, that's gonna be the rub, that'll be the game that we have to, um, solve.
You mean for the, for the computer-based testing?
That's right.
Um, in all honesty, the, the level of stress that those kids have when they know that they're gonna take this test and that it is all, that they're gonna sit in front of, of a computer for however long it is now, you know, I don't, I knew, I remember what it used to be, is, is, is ridiculous, you know? I mean, and there's no way to alleviate that for those kids. And we don't have enough computer labs in schools for them to get comfortable enough with it on a regular basis throughout the school year before they have to sit and take that test.
This school's done a much better job. I mean, everybody's willing contributor, but just getting access to those devices.
Right, I completely agree. But I mean, in your larger elementary schools, you have four, you know, you have four classrooms of students, but in each grade, but yet you only have one computer lab with, you know.
But also, but also recognize that in the classroom, you don't determine mastery. It's not like, hey, we've been doing this whole thing, go over to a computer and let's check and see if you've got it. You, there's multimodal assessment techniques to performance, to written opportunities, to demonstrations, to paper, pencil, to. There's all these different ways that you assess for mastery outside of going to a computer and selecting A through, A through E. A, B, C, D, either way. AP.
So, the second presentation's Advanced Placement Data. This is, um, uh, this is data that we trend, uh, we're trending higher and also contributes to our college and career readiness number, which is CCR acronym. Uh, the, the cat, the sort of snapshot from our AP data. Again, this is another Super Bowl for me in July. We get the data back, we're able to unpack the data. Uh, we've seen, um, a few, uh, significant trends, continued increase in enrollment. And again, that's what AP is about. It's about getting the kids enrolled in the class, getting the kids sitting for the test, then ultimately passing the test. So it's, it's sort of a three-step process. Um, we also see a continued expansion of AP course offerings throughout, uh, SMCPS. Uh, and we, we continue to try to train teachers and provide meaningful professional development for those teachers that are involved in AP. Uh, some districts across the nation actually, um, actually provide an extra planning period for AP teachers uh, to help them with the rigor of the class. That's just something for us to sort of think about and ponder as we move forward. Um, benefits of AP, of course, is a competitive advantage in college admissions. Uh, we, you know, we do, uh, earn credit for qualifying AP scores. That segues into the financial benefits of AP. Uh, the course depth of each of these courses and there is a, um, uh, college-level academic preparation, all of these. And I, I can, I'm proud to say that I was an AP reader for seven years for the calculus test. And, um, when you score these tests, I mean, you talk about what is, you know, psychometric, psychometrically speaking tight, uh, is how they score. You're sitting next to a college professor and your high school teacher and you work collaboratively at the table and you read these essays for eight hours a day for eight straight days. And it's, it's no joke, I mean, you're working the whole time. And, um, it really was the best professional development I ever received as a teacher. And I think, I, I brought a lot of good things back to my classroom, but I think that when we see these AP scores, we, we can feel really good. Might, maybe more so than MCAP with how these, um, the, the psychometrics of the test are being conveyed, so, um, and being reported. Uh, for this, uh, slide here, you can see, uh, we have, um, our three high schools. Chopticon's on the far left to my screen, uh, Great Mills is the middle and Leonardtown's, uh, the third from the left, uh, second from the right. And, uh, that's the enrollment, uh, over the last three years. Uh, so you can see that we're trending in the right direction. Um, the far right-hand bar graph is our enrollment over the last three years. Um, uh, the combination thereof of the three comprehensive high schools.
More kids enrolled.
Yeah, that's, and that's always the first thing. So, we wanna get kids enrolled in the class, alt- we want them to sit for the test and then, uh, pass subsequently. Um, here's our pass percentage. Again, we, you know, Maureen and I talk about the data in context all the time. Uh, you can see, blue is St. Mary's County, the orange is the state of Maryland. Uh, and the gray is the global mean of the AP pass percentage. Uh, and you can see that we've steadily increased over the last four years. Uh, as you can see with the blue graph, steadily increasing since fifteen, uh, sixteen. Uh, the gray has steadily decreased, uh, over time. Um, and Maryland's sort of, sort of kept, uh, consistent throughout. And we gotta feel pretty good that seventy-five percent of our students in St. Mary's County are actually passing with a three, four, or five.
Wait a second, so, so on an AP test, there's, there's five different levels, right?
Uh, here we go, yes.
Yes, there are.
So you pass and, and you said that the AP test is kind of the, the absolute.
Gold standard.
Top of gold standard, period, right?
Yep.
It's a paper pencil test. It's scored by honest-to-goodness, real-life people who are absolute masters of their, of their content.
Yes.
And a three, four, or five is considered passing.
In the eyes of College Board, that's correct, yes.
Very consistent with the pass thing we were talking about.
Well, and, well, if you, if you were to look to something that was already being done and done well for the last thirty-five, forty years? Yeah, right? You know, here is this. Um, and, uh, what's, where we started, you know, with sixty-seven going up to seventy-five while increasing enrollment in AP. Um, again, that demonstrates equity and excellence in that you, when you, when you allow more in, but you expose them to scaffolding and support and top-level instructors who, they do all go to training. Like all of our AP teachers, they sacrifice their time over the summer, they go to AP training, they work together, they collaborate. I mean, to have, you know, to have three out of four scoring three or better on AP exams is fantastic.
Absolutely.
And we're better than Maryland and the world.
Right, right.
We're outpacing the world. Take that Finland.
So, um, the next few slides will be on, uh, germane to each one of our comprehensive high schools. Uh, this is the trend data of our Chopticon friends. An AP performance, blue being the Chopticon mean of percentage of total AP scores. As Scott said, that pass with a three or a four or a five. Uh, and that trend has steadily increased. We've seen we've gone from forty in twenty fourteen, uh, all the way to seventy-three in twenty nineteen. Uh, credit to leadership, also credit to the, the individual teachers that, that are working hard with our students. And we can't forget the pre-AP teachers. I mean, when, when we talk about AP, we, Advanced Placement is not something that you can wake up one day and say, hey, I wanna take an AP class. You have got to have the preparation over the course of their career to be able to say one day, hey, I'm gonna enroll in an AP course. And that's credit to the entire staff at each one of the comprehensive high schools, so. Can you define what a global is? Global's everybody that takes the assessment across the, the world, you know?
In the world.
In the world. Indonesia, India, China, Finland, everywhere.
I thought that's what it was.
That's exactly right, so. Um, the mean for Maryland has stayed pretty consistent between that sixty-three and sixty, uh, seven or sixty-eight level. Uh, the global mean, again, the same global mean that we saw on the slide previous, but this is now with Chopticon's data overlaid. Um, some of the highlights of their performance, um, and again, we have AP coordinators now that are, that are helping facilitate these conversations at each school and their teachers, AP teachers that work on the vertical teaming with middle schools and they work with their own teachers. Maybe outside their content, but it's advanced placement nonetheless. And Denise Mandis, I would be remiss to talk about the job that, that Denise Mandis did. She's vacated, she's now over Duke Elementary, did a great job with spearheading, uh, these performances. And she should feel very proud of, of the accomplishments, I should count it. Um, but the total number of Chopticon students under Kim Summers, uh, has, uh, definitely increased under her tutelage. Uh, it was definitely up from the previous year. Uh, the overall AP pass rate is, has held relatively steady despite the increase. Uh, and we had five courses at Chopticon that had, that had a hundred percent pass rates of three, four, and five, uh, for the content, which is exceptional. So that's unheard of. Um, Great Mills, uh, again, same data, same global mean, same Maryland mean. But you can see the mean for, for, uh, Great Mills has toggled between seventy and seventy-six over the last five years or so. Um, and again, last year, we had seventy percent of our students at Great Mills getting three, four, and five. Uh, with increased performance, which again is always a, a great thing to see. Um, again, this was highlighted, uh, the total number of AP students and the number of exams administered at Great Mills was the highest it had been over the last five years. All Great Mills students that sat for the physics C exam scored a five, which is a, um, the highest that you can get, thirteen out of thirteen. Students met that level. And that's an extremely hard test. Physics C mechanics is, 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 is an extremely difficult, challenging assessment. Last but not least, uh, another highlight for Great Mills, AP stats had a significant jump in performance. Uh, and their overall three, fours, and fives, they were at a five-year high for success. As we moved to Leonardtown High School, again, uh, we have, um, Maryland, global mean stays the same, but you can see the, the blue has increased over time. We started at seventy-nine and fourteen, uh, and we've toggled back and forth. We finally have maintained that eighty, eighty-one percent threshold. And that's eight out of ten students that sit for the AP exam at Leonardtown get a three or above. That, that's extremely high. You can see that, that bests, uh, by twenty-five percent the mean at Maryland, uh, overall. That's an exceptional number and it's something we should be very, um, proud of. Uh, again, at Leonardtown, this was the highest number of exams last year that we administered since twenty seventeen. I'm not sure who the principal was in twenty seventeen, was that, was that you?
Twenty seventeen, no. Twenty seventeen was, so.
Mike Watson, that's right.
Yeah, Watson.
Okay. The overall AP pass rate for Leonardtown High School, um, uh, was around eighty-three percent. Um, it's, it had, it was at its highest rates since fifteen. Uh, and there were six courses at Leonardtown that had a hundred percent pass rate with all scores of three and above. So again, that, that's another exceptional metric for us. Um, a, a big part of that, as I mentioned, was the, were the AP coordinator positions. Um, uh, Great Mills, Amanda Delgado, Leslie, uh, Williams is at Chopticon. And we have Joe Johnson at Leonardtown High School. And those three individuals work with our office, uh, to facilitate these results. Uh, we, we have monthly meetings, um, and Denise had facilitated this when she was in this position. Uh, and, uh, this position's instrumental in sort of, you know, compo- compiling all the data that we need uh, to make these instructional decisions, um, and inform teachers. The AP potential is utilized, that's something that everything works in conjunction, College Board. I think, uh, Dr. Montgomery mentioned this at the beginning, at the outset. Uh, the board has graciously included ninth graders in our PSAT administration. And again, we use that and we were very selective for this upcoming year. So the ninth graders that tested last year, some of those ninth graders in 10th grade are now sitting in an AP course because of the data that we accrued from last year's PSAT nine that we administered in October twenty eighteen. So that, again, that's, we're very grateful that the board is, is on board with this idea of, of finding, uh, and helping us identify potential AP students. Um, again, the, the goal is to target students who traditionally would not be taking an AP course. Um, and I think that's important for us to, um, to understand and to, um, and, uh, and sort of ponder. So, uh, again, the last data point, as students create a College Board account way back in ninth grade, they use that data. And I encouraged every ninth-grade student that's taken the PSAT last year to create a College Board account so they can link up all that data, so all their advanced placement data, their SAT data, their PSAT is all incorporated in one house. And then they can use the Khan Academy to help improve their performance. It's just, it's, it's a fantastic integrated program that we definitely, uh, we want people to use to, it's a fidelity, so. Uh, we, uh, build the capacity of AP through these, you know, informal, uh, I should say informational nights. Uh, we have these professional learning committees that we, um, that we facilitate. We had one at the pre-service meeting. We had the College Board actually come down and help facilitate on August twenty-eighth. Uh, as Scott mentioned, we have AP training opportunities for every one of our AP teachers. Um, and we, we set aside money to go to the conferences as well. Uh, we provide, uh, ed tech, uh, such as Albert, I O, and Khan Academy to help facilitate these scores. Uh, and again, we, um, you know, Denise has done a great job of updating the links to all these ed tech, uh, and, uh, and College Board sites respectively. Uh, there are a couple, um, changes for AP in the upcoming year. Uh, College Board has done a lot of research, um, uh, and, uh, what they're providing for AP teachers is mind-boggling. They're allowing teachers to get access to formative assessments and students actually create, you know, login with their College Board account to link up with the teacher accounts. Uh, and it's called AP Classroom in my AP, so that students now take much more ownership in this process, uh, as well as the teachers. They, they're able to pick and choose what they wanna use. And all these resources are readily available. And as an AP teacher, I would be, uh, you know, I just salivate when I think about all the resources, uh, at their disposal. I used to have binders and books and notebooks from everywhere.
He still has binders and books and notebooks from everywhere.
His office keeps them.
Well, being as eclectic as I can be, everything's in one place, so it's.
In a pile.
Yeah, so, um, uh, we, we do have a change, though. I think, um, what AP, what College Board's asking us to do is, um, we are providing, uh, teacher, I think, students and teachers are gonna work collectively to make decisions about taking the AP test in November as opposed to waiting until March. When, when we normally have done that, they piloted this last year. And their, um, their message to schools is that underrepresented students on AP exams tend to take these tests. They piloted, uh, these, um, sort of protocol last year. And an underrepresented population seemed to sit for the test more readily if they decide earlier that they wanna take the test in November as opposed to waiting till March. So they get their stuff together, students and teachers alike, uh, and if they commit to taking the test in November, uh, the, the, the data has, has, um, has trended positive for these underrepresented groups. So now everybody under the College Board umbrella, the AP umbrella, uh, has to make a decision by November first uh, as to whether or not they're gonna sit for the AP exam in, um, in May, so.
So are you suggesting that, um, that by declaring November, by November first, that the students are somehow going to be more serious about what they're doing? Or what's, what's the driver?
I think, yeah, serious, that's, um, I would say they're more committed. I mean, they, they just, when they put the forty dollars up or whatever the, the, um, the, um, the deposit's going to be, uh, they are much more engaged in the process and I think they take more ownership. At least that's what College Board's conveyed to us. So serious is probably a good descriptor. I think engaged, committed, um, ownership, all those are good sort of synonyms for this, for this, uh, you know, for, for what we, for, I guess for the seriousness of the, of the assessment, taking the test, so. And that's, uh, that's it, so. Wasn't too bad. Sixteen slides, it wasn't too bad.
Two fewer than the last presentation. For the math major.
It is, it is some of the best news that comes out of our school. The, the performance of our students graduating on time, ninety-four percent of them, being college and career-ready is demonstrated by their transcripts, by their performance on MCAP, on PSAT, SAT, AP, industry-recognized technical skills attainment or credentials. Um, it's really reinforced when you put it up against, so, this is the most rigorous academic standard applied to any high school in the world, AP, period. And if your kids, if more of your kids are taking AP each year and their performance is outpacing the state in which you reside and the global scores, I think that says your system's doing a pretty good job.
You know, and I would say, we, we talked about college and career-ready and, and utilizing AP. And I think people look at AP and think, all right, well, that's only if I'm gonna go to college. But I would say to you, based on personal experience of my family, um, it, it's more than that. It is that taking an AP class, um, teaches you and gives you the experience to really delve into something deeply and to work hard and comprehensively. And you need that whether you're gonna go be an electrician or you're going to go study electrical engineering. Um, it, even if you don't get a three on the test.
That's right.
Um, just.
Or a four or a five.
Yeah, whatever.
But threes count.
Threes count. Um, but, you know, it's just, it's the whole idea of the preparation. It gives you the foundation, it gives you to move on to what, whatever else you do. Um, and I, I hope that we are stressing that to our students because the experience they get and the, and the difference in that than, than a traditional course, I think, is, is really profound.
Yeah, the experience, and it's really great for habits of mind, the experience of, of that, um, of an AP course. I mean, I, I could, I, I would concur, uh, when, when I had students that were on the fence as to whether or not they wanted to take the test, I likened it to playing basketball against Michael Jordan, you know, one-on-one. Um, you know, the, the AP test being Michael Jordan, we, you know, the student being the student. And the student, and we won't be Michael Jordan and take in, in, in a basketball game, but what we will do is the experience of playing him, uh, would, would, it sets the standard and, um, it is a life-changing, altering event, yeah.
It is.
Uh, Doctor, do you have, uh, any data, uh, uh, of students that are taking the AP courses? Helping them to get into, you know, what I would call, um, level one, level two sc- colleges?
Absolutely. I mean, that, the, the state's trending, they're, they're taking six years' worth of data and they're, and they're giving that back to us. So MSD's working with our department to see who, which students are going to which schools, four-year, two-year. So MSD's working with our department to see which students are going to which schools, four-year, two-year, et cetera. Yeah, so we do have all that data, and there's no question that this data is helping students get into the top-tier, top-flight schools with scholarships across the country.
I'm gonna throw a mention in the works, though. We were at a Division One school this year, or over the summer, and we stopped into the admissions office, and she handed us the AP, you know, the grades for the, you know, the requirements for AP. And then she told us that their institution was encouraging students to dual-enroll rather than take the AP courses. Because dual enrollment to them, because the, because the standard for acceptance, whether you were three, four, or five, varies between your college or university. So in their mind, if they have a student that is dual-enrolled, they are already performing at a college level and earning college credit. And to them, they were starting to turn the tide that they were waiting the dual enrollment a little bit heavier than they were the AP classes.
Wait till you see our dual enrollment data and our concurrent transcript.
That might be the next presentation, because, I mean, you know, she's like, and she told my daughter outright, she said, "You can enroll in all of them that you want," but for us right now, dual enrollment is just as important, if not more so, than AP.
She probably wasn't ever, though, a high school teacher who taught an AP-level course.
Right.
If you meet a high school teacher who taught an AP-level course, they'll tell you that that matters.
Of course, if you had a big checkbook, it'd be easier to get your kid into school.
Yes.
Well, within certain bounds, it turns out, in the size of the check.
They checkbook and Photoshop.
Right.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, finally, attendance awareness.
And they have been so attentive.
They've been so patient.
Ms. Jones and Ms. Egger have been wonderful.
That was a good segue.
Yeah.
Right.
That's right, can't learn if you don't show up.
Right.
Exactly.
Can't teach you if you're not there.
All right, so we are very excited, Anastasia and I, to be here today to talk about Attendance Awareness Month. The first thing that we would like to present to you and just review was the SS standard, which is for chronic absenteeism. For all of our schools, this is how the state evaluates your attendance, and it's all over the Maryland State report card. So maybe after the meeting, you can take a look at that website for each of our schools, and it also gives us our county average as well. But their definition is chronically absent, so you're absent ten percent or more school days during the school year. And you have to be at least in membership at that school for at least ten days. And their definition of what absent is, is that you're not physically on the school grounds or you're not participating in instruction or instruction-related activities at any approved off-ground locations for the school day. So last year, I had the opportunity to present to the principals at a principals' meeting, and we really needed a way to keep track of all of these students. So our office, Student Services, works with Alex's office and Lori Wyman, and they developed a lot of Cognos reports that gave these principals real-time data that at any moment that they could go in, just hit a couple buttons, and they would get their list of students that are struggling with coming to school, and then putting strategies and incentives in whether it was a plan, whether it was in an attendance contract to make sure that they were successful.
So this year, St. Mary's County Public Schools has joined with Attendance Works, which is a nationwide organization, to recognize September as Attendance Awareness Month. And this theme is, "We belong in school," because it recognizes that students are more likely to attend school if they know that they are safe, connected, supported, and engaged in the classroom, which we all know.
All right, we have a fun slide coming up next with, this is our mascot. We attended, Student Services attended the NAACP Back-to-School Fair in August at Lexington Park Elementary School. So we introduced Sam, and everyone loves Sam. He stands for "School Attendance Matters." And then we also made a little sign with everyone that was getting their picture taken with Sam, and it said, "School Attendance Matters to Me." So families, elementary school students, all the way up to high school students, and you'll see more pictures throughout the presentation. They love Sam, they wanted to hug Sam, and Sam is gonna be making appearances around the county. So already principals have been asking to come, having Sam come to school events, whether it was assemblies, things like that, to promote attendance.
Is Sam going to be at the fair?
We could see, yes. That hasn't been discussed, but that's a good idea. And of course, what does this... Yes, we could have you, how tall are you, though? You have to be at least six foot to fit that.
Yeah, see, I'm short. Dr. Walker would be a great Sam. Those little Five Niners, we're like, we couldn't, it'd puddle all about, it'd look weird.
What am I getting talked into?
Yes, exactly, so we could definitely do that. But what does this look like in our schools? We have permitted this through PBIS and MTSS, which now in sixteen of our schools, we're doing check-in, check-out, which is a fabulous program, it's mentoring program. We're also attending attendance teams, coming up those incentives, engaging in families and community partnerships. And also at the Back-to-School Fair, Student Services put together a little educational session for these parents that came by, so there was different booths that were set up. And there was over seven hundred families that attended this event. It was extremely well-attended, and I think we reached a lot of families in the community.
So I think the biggest thing is daily attendance really does matter. And I think, again, as educators, we recognize that. But when we're looking at how do we increase academic achievement, if you're attending class regularly, you're able to keep up with the daily lessons and assignments. You can take the quizzes and tests on time. It helps you kind of become a better member of the school community. Just by being present at school, students are learning how to be a good citizen by participating in the school community, learning valuable social skills, and developing a broader view on the world. It promotes the importance of education being a priority. It's a commitment to school attendance to show the message to students that education is a priority for our families as well as for our schools. And it helps them develop good habits. It reminds them, we have to arrive on time. Going to school every day kind of leads to the same habits when students are out of school and in the workplace.
All right, and you can see in that picture, this was an eighth-grade student who is currently a ninth-grade student at Great Mills. And Annette Wood is in the picture, she was the PPW at Spring Ridge. And then here are some of our safety assistants also. They were hugging Sam. So do you have any questions or comments for us?
No questions.
Okay.
I was thinking about peers. Sometimes if you have a close friend and...
Peer mentoring.
Maybe that close friend would have influence on the true one.
Yes, absolutely.
Does that seem...
Yes, we made those partnerships within the schools as well.
Sure.
I have nothing, thank you.
This is great. I mean, I'm looking at all the things you're doing to promote attendance, and it's great. And I like Sam, I saw him, he's already posted on the school system website. And you make it fun to want to attend school by the way you market this program. Thank you very much.
I think a lot of people believe that the reason we're stressing school attendance is because we are judged at a federal and state level based on school attendance. But I would counter with that, that with, yes, we understand that that's a metric by which we're measured, but more so, we understand that if kids aren't in school, they're going to fall behind. And the farther behind you fall, the less inclined you are to want to be in school because then it's clearly evident where your gaps are. And so, you know, once you've missed a few days, it's a lot easier to, you know, I don't want to go back because this is gonna happen or that's gonna happen. And so, I truly believe that the reason we are stressing school attendance is because it is important for our children and for their families and for their success in the future. And it goes right along with grades and everything else. It's caring about the students, and that's why this is here. So thank you, because this is, you know, finding every way to get kids to be in classes, you know, a necessary thing, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
All right. Dr. Mar? Are their patients home?
Okay, I think I am the last item. We started the beginning of this meeting talking about back-to-school. We're ending the meeting talking about back-to-school, and now we've been in a week. Just to recap, throughout the summer, our work does not end. Throughout the summer, our students, our staff have been highly engaged. Many of our students were participants in the Lunch and Learn, as well as lunch at the library with our partners there, as well as the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers grant, both at Greenview Knowles and Great Mills High School and a partnership with St. Mary's College. We had our enrichment camps that went on. Our teachers, our leaders, our support staff all participated in professional development throughout the summer to help get them ready for the school year. And Human Resources had, if you came in this room several times throughout the summer, you saw all of the intake sessions with our new teachers to help them get ready. And then we started the year with new teacher induction. Supporting Services staff have worked throughout the summer to prepare our schools for students to arrive as they did last week. This included projects that we've already talked about with the new roof and HVAC systems at Hollywood and Park Hall, as well as new lighting for the field at Lenartown High School. In addition, you could see the hard work that is done to prepare our hallways, our classrooms, our cafeterias to get ready for our students and staff. In addition, last year, when we came to you, we shared we had a number of new instructional programs. We had resources, we had new textbook series. This year, we have new, we started the year with a system-wide literacy conference. And I believe at the last meeting, we highlighted that with our eighty or so presentations led by our teachers with best practices for unlocking literacy across content areas. In addition, throughout the summer, over a hundred and fifty teachers participated in conscious discipline training to help them prepare for welcoming students and to start the school year with effective routines. New technology tools were put in place that helped refine our work with students, particularly the Edgenuity platform, which provides opportunities for recovery for our students and for advancing online learning. We have piloted, we're beginning some pilots of the Google Classroom for many of our teachers to use. We'll have more information on that to follow as our pilot continues this year. And our student information system, E-School Plus, was upgraded over the summer to, that really is our platform for teachers to, not only our student information system, but provides TAC and HAC for our teachers and parents. So there's a lot that's going on that opens the school year. So as you know, the summer is not a time of rest, but really a time of warming up for the school year. Last board meeting, too, we shared some of the code of conduct initiative, particularly with regard to vaping prevention. We also have a website that has a lot of the information for parents and community members. We've put that out through our social media platforms. And if you've walked into any of our high schools, you saw the new safety and security vestibules, as well as other initiatives to make sure our students are safe as they go through the school year. One of the, as I opened the meeting, talking about student messaging, last meeting, we shared with you an opening message by our students to help our students prepare. This one I'm gonna share now is actually a continuation of that series, the Be Your Best You series led by some of these students who you'll see in a minute, talking about next week's college fair. And by the way, here, they're standing in front of the mural that was painted in Lenartown by our students, so.
Hi, I'm Gianna from Great Mills.
I'm Josh, you're the president.
And have you guys been interested about colleges? Because the college fair is coming up this fall. How about you let them know what college fair is about?
The college fair is in the neighborhood, over a hundred and thirty different universities are present. You'll be able to see them, you'll be able to see what they offer, what you like, what you don't like. The college fair is a great opportunity for you to get to know yourself and get to know what kind of colleges you're interested in.
If you guys are worried about money, don't be, because they have scholarships and financial aid at the college fair. The college fair will help you get a grad school on different colleges and what they offer for you, and it'll let you know about colleges that you haven't even thought about.
When you first get there, the college fair will be broken up into three sessions from three different home bases. If you're interested in attending, talk to your guidance counselor. But it's open to the public if I want to.
How do they get in touch with the colleges, Josh?
The best thing to do is to go to their website, look for a number, call them, get in touch with the admissions office. The more you get yourself out there and you let them know that you're here, the better chance you have of getting a college application.
And don't start late when you're a senior and get focused on college. Just start as soon as you can, so you can get a grad school or college that you think that you'd like to go to.
Thank you all for watching. Be sure to hit that like button and subscribe for more tips and tricks and be the best student. We hope to see you at the college fair.
See you soon.
That's fabulous. That is exciting.
So...
That was wonderful.
I thought they were using a tele... they're not, they're just a...
That was brilliant.
So Josh, Gianna, and Sophia will be sharing these messages about every two weeks. We'll post it on our YouTube and put it out for our students to watch and our families to stay informed about what's going on as well. And as Dr. Smith was saying, this is all them. They write it, they put it together, they think about what's important to their peers. So that student voice is alive and well and helping to advise each other. So if, first of all, to access that as well as other resources, you can check out our website, and I encourage students and parents to take a look. There's two tabs for, one for students, one for parents. It has all of the resources, as well as all of our social media platforms are up here on the website as well. And they're also linked on every school's website so that you can stay informed. In addition, we have, in addition to those platforms for keeping parents and families informed, we also have School Messenger, which gets messaged out by email and phone calls and SMS texting, and information is on the website as well. As I begin my twenty-sixth year in public schools, every year is just as exciting. This year is no exception to that. So welcome back to the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Mar. Thank you. Good job.
No questions?
Anyway?
Yeah, nothing.
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. That was great.
Does anybody have anything else?
Nope.
All right, the next board meeting will be on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, at six o'clock. And we are adjourned. Mr. Howard.